I swear, if I have to go with the stolen gavel again, like, you know, not gonna be able to do it.
I'm just scared.
Thank you, Barbara.
Good evening. I'd like to call the regular Borough Council meeting of April 10th, 2023 to order. This meeting has been properly advertised in the Home News Tribune of January 6th, 2023, according to public law, 1975, Chapter 231. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Council President Zambrana?
Here.
Councilman Collins?
Here.
Councilwoman O'Donnell?
Here.
Councilman Peretti?
Here.
Councilman Potter?
Here.
Councilman Revulinski is absent.
Thank you. Will you please just stand and join me in a moment? I'm sorry, followed by a move to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, now we'll move on to the approval of minutes from the March 27th, 2023 meeting. Do I have, are there any, oh, we may have a motion, and a second, please?
I have a correction, Madam Mayor.
Go ahead, John.
On the approval of the minutes for the March 13th, I, I have a yay for approval of the minutes when I abstained, so they have to correct that.
Excuse me, we're having all technical difficulty. Can we hold on for one sec? What? Are you clicking the mic?
The recording is saying that it's on low and not picking up.
Is it not picking up my voice? We had a lot of problem with that when I first started. Have to get a lot closer to the mic? No?
Do you want to use the other mic?
He is working out his line and pay that.
I'm not sure if, is it just mine? Oh, it's all, it's all of them. It's not just mine.
You want us to test, Mimi?
We can keep talking so that you still have test material? Is that helping?
Testing? Can you hear us? No?
There's some connection holes there?
Okay. Bear with us, everybody who's watching at home.
Please stand by.
We're experiencing operating difficulties.
All right. Samson is working.
And it's supposed to be, the wirefunds are supposed to be in there?
It seems to, it seems to just be the recording, but the recording's extremely important, so.
This should be moved. Right, right. It's not picking up anything. It might just be, it might, I guess we have to get somebody.
Mine's working.
That's, it's how it's talking about the feed.
Yeah.
To send the feed to camp, to send the feed to the
Recording.
Or recording.
Oh, there you go.
Is anything happening?
No.
Good question.
Do we do this? Never had a problem before, huh?
Never. I wonder if I should shut it all the way down and start it again and see if it reboots?
Whatever you think.
It's gonna stay on today's day? I guess it's, let me just.
Is there a Plan B?
We'll see what happens. I mean, it's like literally a push one button.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, I could keep looking, but it's not, huh?
Russ is suggesting anything that comes into like the back of the machine, like everywhere it makes a connection? Anything, Mimi?
Just trying to reboot it.
That's what the tech people always say, reboot.
Yes?
You want, you have the same report to compare and check if it's working?
Not up to, that's totally up to
It's the record, it's, now it's the recording system.
Totally up to Mimi, not me. Just give her a second.
To reboot. Do you want to do a frame up, just trying to
Yeah. So, for the, for the folks that are just joining, we, we record. Oh, okay. We do an audio recording, which now is up and running, so sorry for the delay.
And we're joining this recording at 7:07.
All right. We're moving on to the minutes. John, did you want to say your comment or correction?
There's a correction on the approval of the borough minutes for the March 13th meeting. I abstained and it has me saying yay, or yay.
Anyone else?
For which?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear what, which one?
No, on the March 13th minutes, it says approval of the minutes. I abstained with Councilman Potter. We both weren't here.
So, so on the 27th, when you did the minutes, he, for the approval of minutes for the 13th, it should be abstained for Councilman Potter. Okay?
Thank you.
Anyone else have any comments or correction?
Motion to approve as amended?
Second.
I have a motion by Councilwoman O'Donnell, second by Councilman Potter. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Thank you. Next, we have the public hearing for Community Development Block Grant. The purpose of the public hearing tonight regarding the Housing and Community Development Fund is to receive citizens' input on how the borough should spend any housing and community development that are allocated to the borough. Housing and community development funds are monies received from the federal government and administered by the county government. The use of housing and commel, excuse me, housing and community development funds is limited to certain projects. Monies allocated for this funding round are expected to be approximately $58,919 for Milltown. In the past, we have funded educational, recreational, and nutritional programs, senior transportation, building improvements such as new windows and roof. At this time, I will open the floor to public comment. If anyone from the public wishes to comment, please state your name and address for the record. Seeing none, I will close, ask for a motion and a second to close the public hearing.
So moved.
And second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Next, we'll move on to the presentation from CME. They had, will have a presentation about the water system improvement.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Council, and members of the public. Mike McCollum from CME, I have with me head of our water, wastewater department, Mr. Keachirvala, and our project leader for this water system improvement, Mackenzie Binder. I'm going to let them go through the detail. Basically, this is this year's round of funding that the borough received through the basic coronavirus restoration project. And this is a project that's been reviewed through your utility committee and has actually been bid, and we have a rapid additional award tonight. But I'm going to let the folks go through the detail. You can get an idea of what's included, and any questions, certainly we'd be happy to answer. Rather than further discussion, Mackenzie, please take, take, take.
Hello? Hi, thanks. Mackenzie Binder, I was the project leader on this project. So this is to go through the Water System Improvements Project that was recently bid. So as Mike said, this project was funded by a grant through the Coronavirus State Fiscal Recovery Fund. That fund allocates monies to make necessary water improvements in the borough. There were kind of four components to this project. One of them was a water main replacement section. This occurred on Highland Drive and Chestnut Street. The next was cleaning and lining of some existing water mains. That was primarily along Oak Avenue and East Lawrence Street, as well as Highland Drive. There was the intersection of Wilson Avenue and Center Street. We reconfigured some water services. And then also the last piece is there were three air release valves along a water transmission pipe that are proposed to be replaced. So this screen just gives an overview of the entire project. It shows the different areas for replacement, lining, the air release valves, and the services. So as I said, the first section was water main replacements. So we're replacing water main along Highland Drive from Oak Avenue down to Chestnut Street. And then we're also replacing water main on Chestnut Street between East Lawrence and Highland Drive. So this section of the water main replacement was approximately 958 linear feet of, we're putting in eight-inch water main. There are about 25 homes along this portion that we are going to replace the water services. Just a side note, as part of a previous water improvements project, new water main was installed on Highland Drive between Van Leeu and Oak Street, so this will complete the loop on Highland Drive with brand-new water main. It continues here. And then as well as on Chestnut Street, it's about 300 feet of eight-inch water main, six homes along this section. And again, as part of a previous project, the water main between Van Leeu and East Lawrence along Chestnut was previously replaced. So the reason we're replacing the water main in this area is due to high break history versus lining this section. So the next item was the cleaning and lining. So there's two areas of cleaning and lining. One is along Highland Drive between Elkins Lane and Harrison. The other section is along Oak and East Lawrence. So on Oak and East Lawrence, it's about 800 feet of lining. We're also replacing water services along this portion of main. So this is a six-inch main that will be cleaned and lined. And then on Highland Drive, as I said, between Elkins Lane and Harrison, it's about 1,400 feet and 27 homes will get new water services. In addition, there's, we're milling and paving the intersection of Elkins and Highland. So these, these portions are proposed to be cleaned and lined due to water quality issues identified by borough staff. The next kind of two sections were the reconfiguration of the water services, as well as the replacement of the air release valves. So there are two water services that are located on a dead-end water main on Wilson Avenue. They will now be relocated off of a dead-end to address water quality issues at this intersection. And then the last piece was the air leaf, air release valve replacement. There are three air release valves between Elkins Lane and North Moats. So each of those is proposed to be replaced. The one at Elkins Lane is in a chamber. We're going to take off the valve and put a new one on. The other two, we're putting in a new doghouse manhole to house the new air release valve structure. So that is the summary of the project. Are there any questions?
Yes, hi, I actually have a question. Thank you very much for providing this information. I know we've had several meetings with our utilities committee, and I'm glad we're able to see it, see the project hopefully start. My question is, I noticed in the letter, the lowest bid, the, the contractor on the lowest bid, we actually found a calculation error of $17,000 in our favor. So my question is, does the contractor know about this, this issue?
We have not advised him. The recalculation is automatic, the documents require the third of the borough currently, but the documents are clear that should errors occur, this has to be done. So routinely, if it were a bigger number than 17,000, we'd be more concerned about it. But on the overall scope of the job, it's not significant. You know, we did not tell him. Really, there's, I don't want to give him any advice, but our understanding is there's almost no recourse. He's made an error and he's got to correct.
All right, so if we approve this tonight, we award it to him, he's going to accept?
He should be accepting, I mean, he should be, I mean, no reason to think he won't, but I'm not going to tell you that, I can guarantee you that if he's advised of the problem, that he won't have an issue. So, all we can do is hold him to what the documents say, and that's what they say.
Okay.
These things are fairly routine, those, these calculations. If it was a larger amount, I'd be more concerned about it.
Like I said, I don't want to delay the project anymore. I don't want to award it, and then they have an issue going back and forth with the dollar amount. So that's why I just want to make sure we're all on the same page.
The only option you have is to award some amount of bid that, but that's really not really right.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Mackenzie, I have a question, but I think it may be directed more toward Mike from experience at previous meetings. A lovely woman, I believe her name was Barbara, from Highland Drive, came in and said, "You have a big sign near my home, and it says Highland Drive, you know, water improvement, and my water still isn't great." Do you remember exactly where she lived, and if this portion of the project encompasses that area?
I recollect she's in the area where we're replacing the main. And unfortunately, the money just couldn't hold out in the last phase. And Mayor and Council agreed to put this phase in, and that's what we're doing. Break history caused us to replace this, and it's wiped in the light and later on.
So she, she is, from your recollection, "Hey, Barbara."
Yes.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
They've been having issues for quite a while, like brown water and low water pressure.
They've come to meetings in the past as well, yes.
So one of the questions I have about, speaking of brown water and low water pressure, is, you know, we've heard about the cul-de-sacs, not so much on the north end of Tampa, the south end. So will the air valve replacement help them with their lower pressure or discoloration issues?
There's a belief that the air release valves have limited the amount of water going across the north section of the borough. So while that will help pressures in the area of Washington and Ryder's Lane, the dead-end issues still exist, and they're really related to the fact that at a dead-end, really, there's no water flowing through them. So pressure should not be an issue, but certainly, and we call it discolored water, it's, it's discolored water that sometimes will occur with the dead ends. The more lining you do, though, is, is starting to go through, and I think it has a positive impact on us.
Okay, good.
If you continue with the projects, it's going to start to get better.
So when we approve these, then when can we expect work to get started on these?
It's probably about 30 days, time of the contract's awarded, and then we get, all the contracts get approved by insurance certificate gets in, by all the folks that look at it, and we'll get a pre-construction meeting. So about 30 to 45 days.
For everything that you presented today?
Yeah, just to get started, not finished, but started.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I guess that was, that was my next question. What's the duration period?
I would say that the contract time in here is probably, probably around six months, I'd say.
And then just to clarify, this is all paid for by grant money?
Correct.
Yep.
For estimates of $1.8 million, the bids came in just under that, so it's all within that.
Yeah, we've been very fortunate. We've been asking every year for money from the state, from the, anywhere we can get it. So there, it's great that we don't have to have impact to the taxpayers, ratepayers, that, you know, we get a lot of these improvement projects done through these grants.
I believe soft costs, which are something
That's good, yes. That's very good, yep.
And as with some of the other projects, are they being done in coordination with the PSCNG projects that are prevalent around town, so that we're not, you know, paving over an area and they're ripping it up, or, you know, having any conflict with whose truck wins the battle to the dig?
Yeah, our folks have been in contact with Ralph and to ensure that that kind of thing doesn't happen, that's right.
Fantastic, thank you.
We'll verify again when pre-construction meeting starts.
I have one question. What's a doghouse manhole?
It is a manhole that sits on top of an existing pipe. That way, you don't have to cut the pipe and isolate the main and stop the water. So you can put the manhole in without actually disrupting service.
There's not anything that's raised or anything, right?
No, it just sits on top of the pipe.
Okay, thank you.
Then our doghouse looks inside, it goes up and down like that, because that's what it is.
Thank you very, anybody else have any questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you, Mike, thank you.
Thank you to CME. Now we will move on to comments from the audience on resolutions. If any member of the public wishes to speak on any of the resolutions, please identify yourself to the clerk and say your name and address for the record. These comments are limited to resolutions listed on the agenda. Seeing none, I will close audience comments and move on to the bill list. Will the clerk please read by title only, Bill Resolution 117, 2023?
Resolution 117, 2022, 2023 is authorizing the payment of bills, claims, and statements against the borough of Milltown in a total amount of $3,171,240.12.
You've heard the reading of this resolution. What is your pleasure?
Madam Mayor, I make the motion if this bill list, do you approve this type?
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Potter, second by Council President Zambrana. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Council President Zambrana?
Aye.
Councilman Collins?
Aye.
Councilwoman O'Donnell?
Aye.
Councilman Peretti?
Aye.
Councilman Potter?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thanks. Next, we have the introduction of resolutions. When voting on resolutions, all matters listed under the consent agenda are considered to be routine in nature and having, excuse me, been reviewed by the Borough Council, will be enacted by one motion. Any item may be removed from the consent agenda at the request of any council member, and if so removed, will be treated as a separate matter. Any items requiring expenditure are supported by a certification of availability of funds. Are there any questions, or does anyone want to pull any resolution from the consent agenda this evening? Okay, there being no request to pull any resolutions, will the clerk please read the consent resolution?
Whereas pursuant to the rules of council, the council may establish a consent agenda for any regular or special meeting. And whereas the borough clerk has posted a consent agenda for this meeting. Now, therefore be resolved by the mayor and Borough Council of the borough of Milltown, County of Middlesex, State of New Jersey, that the consent agenda previously prepared by the borough clerk be approved without the necessity of having the individual resolutions read by the borough clerk.
You've heard the reading of this resolution. What is your pleasure?
Madam Mayor, I make the motion that these resolutions be approved as typed.
Second?
I have a motion by Councilman Potter, second by Councilwoman O'Donnell. Any discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Council President Zambrana?
Aye.
Councilman Collins?
Aye.
Aye.
Councilwoman O'Donnell?
Aye.
Councilman Peretti?
Aye.
Councilman Potter?
Aye.
Motion carries to approve resolutions 118 through 123.
Thank you. Okay, now we'll move on to ordinances. We are going to have the public hearing for ordinance 231521. Since introduction, full copies of ordinance 231521 are presently posted on the Borough website, on bulletin board at Borough Hall, and are available at no cost in the offices of municipal clerk between the hours of eight-thirty a.m. and four-thirty p.m. Monday through Friday. May I have a motion and a second to open the public hearing for ordinance 231521?
So moved.
Second.
And my, I'm sorry, I should have said, and that's an ordinance to amend Chapter 14 recreation fees. So who's second?
I motion, Dave second.
Okay, so I have a motion by, thank you, Councilwoman O'Donnell, second by Councilman Potter. The public hearing on ordinance 231521 is now open to any member of the public who wishes to speak on ordinance 231521. Seeing none, I'll ask for a motion and a second to close the public hearing for ordinance 2315.
Motion to close.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Collins, second by Councilwoman O'Donnell, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, now the public hearing for ordinance 2315 is now closed. May I have a motion and a second to adopt ordinance 231521?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Potter, second by Councilwoman O'Donnell. Any further comments from the council?
I had a couple of comments that I wanted to add. I think we've made great strides, an active user of our recreation, so I was very engaged in the discussion about the fees and so forth. So while I will be voting to pass it tonight, I think there's some margin for consideration of items for future and possible improvement. We've looked at the use of Community Pass, particularly allowing our Milltown residents to have access to register for programs prior to anyone else, so I think that that is being implemented, I'm happy to see that. I'd like to see further alignment of resident and non-resident fees consistently across all of our programming. And I know that we're going to be experimenting with the use of consistent ten-week sessions for consistent pricing, but I hope that next year we'll take a close look at how that worked and see if perhaps coming up with a formula to have var, duration of varying weeks for different programs as seen fit and the pricing that would go with that accordingly. And then one thing that I noticed was that we have the residency of the host for camps and just want to see how that works out because I feel like the, a camp would be hosted by an entity, not, not a person. But in general, I'm very happy to see, I'm very excited to get especially our summer programming, that includes our pool and our camps, ready, ready to go.
Thank you. Anyone else have any comments? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Council President Zambrana?
Aye.
Councilman Collins?
Aye.
Councilwoman O'Donnell?
Aye.
Councilman Peretti?
Aye.
Councilman Potter?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Now we have the public hearing for ordinance 231522. Since introduction, full copies of ordinance 231522 are presently posted on the Borough website, on the bulletin board at Borough Hall, and are available at no cost in the office of the municipal clerk between the hours of eight-thirty a.m. and four-thirty p.m. Monday through Friday. May I have a motion and a second to open the public hearing for ordinance 231522 regarding an ordinance to establish a cap bank for the calendar year 2023?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilwoman O'Donnell, second by Councilman Potter. The public hearing on ordinance 231522 is now open to any member of the public who wishes to speak on ordinance 231522. We got a squeak. We're having a little technical issue. And I don't see any member of the public who wishes to speak, so I will ask for a motion and a second to close the public hearing for ordinance 231522.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilwoman O'Donnell, second by Councilman Collins. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
So may I have a motion and a second to adopt ordinance 231522?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilwoman O'Donnell, second by Council President Zambrana. Any further comment from the council?
I'll just mention that I like the idea of the cap bank now that I understand better what, what it entails. It's essentially when we didn't spend some, and correct me please if I misunderstood this, when we didn't spend something, we put it aside toward that same item in a future year. And sometimes it's actually planned that way because just like in, when you're doing something at home, when something is expensive, you put a little bit aside toward it on, in multiple years and then you make the purchase when you have all of the money. So I support, wholeheartedly support the cap bank.
Great, anyone else? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Council President Zambrana?
Aye.
Councilman Collins?
Aye.
Councilwoman O'Donnell?
Aye.
Councilman Peretti?
Aye.
Councilman Potter?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. All right, now we will move on to our council reports. We'll begin with the Department of Public Safety, Councilwoman Margaret O'Donnell.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I will begin with a fire department report submitted by Chief Raymond Jolly. In the month of March, there were two drills, one meeting, seven fire calls, two special assignments, four work details totaling sixteen incidents for the month, sixty-seven incidents to date, and a total of eight hundred and fifty-two point five man-hours dedicated so far this year. There were two fire calls that involved smoke detector activations, two that involved the odor of natural gas, and twice we were on standby for brush fires. One of the drills that was done involved forcible entry and a prop was lent to our department by the Old Bridge Fire Department District Three, and we thank them for that. I had mentioned at our previous meeting that we had youth in government at the firehouse and that was one of the special assignments. We have inducted two new members recently. One of those, Josh Alfree, has already firefighter one certification and will be a probationary member for six months. And Henry Chang has completed firefighter one and begun firefighter two at the Fire Academy, but he's not taken his state test just yet. Scheduled for the month of April is a live burn on April twenty-third at the Fire Academy. Vehicle maintenance is pending on vehicle seventy-two and sixty-two. Seven SCBA bottles are out for hydro testing and ten came back and they had passed their tests. The footing for the memorial is completed along with the installation of the lights and the monument will be completed by mid-April, which is great news because we look forward to Memorial Day festivities there. We always announce at our council meetings that members are needed for the fire department. Candidates interested in joining are encouraged to stop by the firehouse Monday nights at six-thirty or email joinmilltownfire@gmail.com. And I'll also mention that the flower sale this past weekend was so successful that it was a sellout, so I know I enjoyed getting a few items there. I saw a few, more than a few people there with me shopping, it was a great experience. I wanted to move on to our Office of Emergency Management meeting recap. So we didn't pull together the entire Office of Emergency Management, we limited it to the public safety component, which includes the rescue squad, the fire department, the police department, and our council committee consisting of myself, Councilman Potter, and Councilman Revolinsky. We talked about surface and floodwater training that entails classroom and practical components. The rescue squad particularly is interested in getting additional wearable equipment and the police department, tossable bags and flotation devices. Clearly flooding and water is a big issue of concern in our, the emergencies, that some of the emergencies that we're most concerned about being prepared for. They are all interested in obtaining a grant writer and consultant to see what we need and the best ways to get it financially. The rescue squad, fire department, and police department all contributed to a conversation about revisiting use of the Cottage Avenue Firehouse for training, staging during emergencies, and safe climate-controlled storage of OEM equipment. We will be having meetings in May and June leading up particularly to addressing Fourth of July, and that will incorporate the larger Office of Emergency Management components inclusive of DPW and utilities as well. The OEM group will be submitting a request to present at our June twenty-sixth meeting to learn more about, about them and what they're doing, and I'm excited for everyone to hear the many things that they do and prepare for so that we're all safe here in Milltown. I will have fire, I'm sorry, police department and rescue squad reports for a future meeting because we just finished the month and I don't have them from those departments just yet. And I'm prepared to deliver a Milltown Public Library report if, were you going to do that?
Do you have the library report?
Yeah, I have it.
Yeah, okay.
Do you want me to read it?
When, when it comes to you, you can do it, I was prepared if you needed me to. So I'll hand things back to you.
All right, thank you. Next we'll move on to the Department of Utilities, Councilman Dave Potter.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Madam Mayor, my first report is from the Electric Department. Streetlights were repaired at the following locations, Albert Avenue and Janet Court. A new streetlight was added on Howard Street. Department members responded to several calls for hanging wires. Electric meters were replaced at several locations. A pole transfer was completed on Cleveland Avenue. Verizon removed the old pole. A pole transfer was complete on Lafayette Street. Verizon also removed the old pole. A new service drop was installed on Desmond Avenue for a service upgrade. Numerous work orders associated with billing issues were completed and final readings of closed accounts were performed. Regarding the substation, daily checks performed, maintenance of egress lighting is continuing, contaminant sump pumps were checked for proper operation. Several poles were inspected for safety issues. Rubber goods have been sent out for testing. inventory was reviewed and necessary materials ordered. Several power outages, power issues were investigated and utilities assisted the billing department with customer issues. Several electric meters were replaced. Respectfully submitted, John Eckert. Madam Mayor, my second report is the water sewer report. PSCNG continues to work throughout the town, requires markouts, monitoring of pump stations occur on a regular schedule, daily work orders are completed in a timely manner. With assistance from DPW staff, repairs were made to the main water at the Borough Park. A new water and sewer tap was made to ninety-two Reeve Avenue, which was a new home, and this was used as a training exercise on how to do a live water tap to the main. The training was conducted by an employee of the Electric Department who has water experience. Lafayette Avenue had a pole transfer done and a water department employee and DPW employee assisted in grounding for the Electric Department. As per the DPW requirements, a lead and copper testing has been completed and we have passed the last four tests in a row throughout the last two years. The results are being processed and it will be distributed to the residents who had participated. We would like to thank the forty residents who participated in the testing. Respectfully submitted, Don Herman. Madam Mayor, I also would like to thank CME for your, for their presentation today and we look forward to the progress on these future water system improvement projects. As far as the planning board, the next planning board meeting will be this Wednesday, April twelfth at seven p.m. here at Borough Hall. And finally, Fourth of July. This weekend, we have a dine to donate at Francesco's, April fifteenth and sixteenth. And just to let everybody know, tickets are now on sale for the upcoming Celebrity Bartender fundraiser that will be Saturday, April twenty-ninth at the American Legion. Tickets are available at the following locations or will be available at the following locations starting tomorrow. Mike's Country Market, Maria's, Milltown Convenience, Bagel Express, and Rescue by Lacy. Or you can purchase this using the QR code on this flyer or on the website or contact any committee member. And Madam Mayor, that concludes my report.
Thank you. Next we have the Department of Public Works and Recycling, who has, Councilman Revol is absent, who has his report?
Do you want me to read the library calendar?
Sure.
Let's see, April tenth, tonight is the quilters, six to eight, the knitters, eight, six-thirty to eight p.m. Tomorrow, April eleventh is kids movie, ten-thirty a.m. League of Super Pets is the movie. Mahjong is six-thirty to eight p.m. The library board meeting is six-thirty p.m. Wednesday, April twelfth is Drop and Craft, eleven a.m. Thursday, April thirteenth is Storytime BB, ten-thirty a.m., all ages, eleven-thirty a.m., hand lettering workshop, one p.m. Friday, April fourteenth is Art, ten to twelve. Saturday, Lego Club, eleven thirty a.m. Let's see, Monday, the seventeenth will be Tween Craft, three-thirty p.m., Gardening Club, six-thirty p.m., Quilters, six to eight, Knitters, six-thirty to eight p.m. Tuesday, April eighteenth, Adult Yoga, nine fifteen a.m. Late Hazzards of New Jersey, five-thirty p.m. Mahjong, six-thirty to eight p.m. Thursday, the twentieth, there'll be no Storytime. Friday, the April twenty-first, Art will be ten a.m. to twelve p.m. April twenty-second will be Earth Day at Mill Pond Park, ten to three. And that concludes the report till, on Monday.
Does anybody have the Public Works report? Look at you. Standby. Thank you.
All right, everyone, the DPW report, and I haven't had a chance to preview this, so bear with me. The park bathrooms have been cleaned and the floors have been painted in preparation for the upcoming season. All railings at the Little League building have been painted. The flagpole at Michelin Field has been painted. The new Goose Crossing signs have been installed at Main Street and Mill Pond Park Path, Washington Avenue, and South Main Street near the Home Depot entrance. DPW staff assisted with the Fire Department Monument Project. Street sweeping has begun throughout town. Catch basin clearing is ongoing and pothole repair is ongoing. Several stop signs and various street signs have been replaced. The broken sign pole at Riva and North Main has been replaced. The cleanup of vegetation and debris at the Schwendeman Cabin has taken place and will be ongoing. Work has taken place at all Borough Fields in preparation for Little League Opening Day 2023. Various DPW staff have been CPR and first aid certified and the remaining staff will be certified by the end of this month. Road repairs have taken place on Tracy Drive and George Street, and this report was respectfully submitted by Ralph, and I'm not going to try his last name because I always mess it up, only in public. So, thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate you bringing that, Margaret. Next we have the Department of Environmental Health and Social Services, Councilman John Collins.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The only thing I have is the Earth Day at the Mill Pond Park, April twenty-second, ten a.m. to three p.m. That's it, Madam Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Next we have the Department of Recreation, Councilman James Peretti. I'm going to read that for James?
Actually, Madam Mayor, I'm going to read for James since she's on the phone today, so, no worries. So updates for the recreation. Albert Avenue Camp registration opened on Saturday, April first. We have a hundred and sixty youngsters signed up along with summer trips via Community Pass. This is a more streamlined approach from last year. It creates a one-stop shop for all of our families when registering. Borough Pool memberships also opened last week, a month earlier from 2022. We had a great first day of signups with over a hundred and thirty-five We had a great first day of signups with over a hundred and thirty-five memberships purchased. Milltown Day vendor registration is also live on Community Pass. And finally, tennis court construction is underway. The old surface was totally removed last week. Crack filling and seal coating will be occurring shortly. Visit our park improvement section on our website to see some of the construction photos. Councilman Peretti, is there anything else you'd like to add?
That's it, thank you.
And that concludes our report.
Sounds good, thank you. Next, we have Department of Finance, Administration and Planning, Council President Bill Zembrana.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have three short reports. I'll start with the longest first. This is from the Milltown Borough Senior Center. As always, the following activities take place each week at the Milltown Senior Center, and all of these activities run through the Office on Aging. These activities include aerobics, line dancing, yoga, billiards, walk aerobics, men's club chorus, Spanish arts and crafts, bingo, and a monthly visit from the VNA nurse. Not to forget the newest program, which was added, which is called Sweating with the Oldies. The newest class will begin on Wednesday, April nineteenth, at ten-thirty AM. It is called Fun with Robin, and this is a class that will be taught by Robin Villanova, Villona of Kaland Dance Studios of Milltown. This is a new creative way to dance and exercise in the very popular many of our local senior centers, senior centers. The senior center also offers the opportunity to join the Milltown Senior Centers Club. The fee is ten dollars per year. For more information, please contact Bob Skarsinski at seven-three-two-two-nine-six-one-one-five-nine. You do not have to join the senior citizens' club to participate in the Office on Aging programs and activities. Just today, April tenth, at eleven o'clock this morning, there was an AARP presentation in conjunction with the Milltown Library called Fraud Watch Network Basics. This coming Wednesday, the twelfth, there will be a bus trip to the Christmas Tree Shop and Job Lot. The bus will be leaving at nine-thirty AM. Thursday, April thirteenth, there will be a bus trip to Cyril's Restaurant in Monroe Township, leaving the senior center at eleven-fifteen AM. Tuesday of next week, the eighteenth, there will be a bus trip to Boscov's. The bus will be leaving at nine-thirty AM. Tuesday, the twenty-fifth, the following week, there will be a bus trip to the Skylark Diner. The bus will be leaving at nine-thirty AM. On Thursday, the twenty-seventh, there will be a bus trip to the Amish Market. The bus will be leaving at nine-thirty AM. As previously stated about the VNA nurse, she'll be there on April eighteenth from twelve to three PM. Any Milltown senior can sign up on the bulletin board. If they would like an appointment with the nurse, this is a free service. The senior center is also interested in starting a bocce team. If anyone is interested or has some friends who might be interested in playing, they can contact Debbie Cuddy at seven-three-two-two-nine-six-oh-six-eight-one. As with all trips and presentations, there is a sign-up sheet on the bulletin board at the senior center, and of course, if you're interested in participating, you can call Debbie at seven-three-two-two-nine-six-zero-six-eight-one, or email her at decuddy@milltownborough.com. Any additional senior center details can always be viewed by accessing the Borough website at milltownnj.org and navigating to the senior center pages. Just a note that the Ford Avenue Redevelopment Agency meeting for April eighteenth will be canceled, and the next meeting to be held for the Ford Avenue Redevelopment Agency will be slated for Tuesday, May sixteenth. And then the last item that I have is Jeanette. Just want to make sure I have this right. We will be approving the budget at the next budget meeting, at the next council meeting.
That's correct.
On the twenty-fourth.
The twenty-fourth.
So, just to make sure if anyone on council has any questions or needs any particular details on anything, make sure that you get that out to Jeanette and I and the rest of the finance team between now and the Friday before the presentation. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. And everybody has the budget, right?
Yes.
They've had, had a good review. Okay, great, thank you. Next, administrative report?
I have no reports tonight, ma'am.
Engineer, Mr. McCallum.
Nothing, President, what's going on?
And our Borough Attorney, Mr. Vignolo.
No reports.
Back to me. We do need some poll workers for the primary election. If you're interested in being a poll worker, Mimi, can you share what people need to do if they're interested in being a poll worker?
They will have to go to a training class, which will be, the first time they do that, they'll get paid an additional thirty dollars to work a full day as a poll worker. It's a three-hundred dollar payment for the day, but you can choose to do a half-day, which would be half of that amount of the hundred and fifty dollars. Those, those days work either from like five-thirty in the morning until one in the afternoon, or one in the afternoon until eight PM at close in the evening. They can certainly contact me if they're interested, and I can help them go through the paces as to, if they're unaffiliated, they can work for either side. Otherwise, you have to be a registered voter to work within the registered party. They can't flip, they used to be able to flip back and forth and just service as a poll worker, but they no longer allow you to do that.
And that's June, what?
June sixth, Tuesday.
June sixth is the primary. Okay, thank you. I did hear mention of the Little League Opening Day in the report, so it was nice to see everyone out there. The weather was a little iffy, but it turned out to be a really nice day. It was great to see everybody at the Easter egg hunt on Saturday. It was a beautiful day, and there were a bunch of kids, so thanks to the Lions Club for setting that up. It's been two, two nice weekends of, of community events, and I did pass by, I was driving somewhere the other night, and I saw that the lights were on over at the softball field, and it's great to see how, how that's turned around. So, it's really a vibrant place for the games, and it was just getting dark, and the lights were on, and it was, it was good to see. So, thanks to everybody for getting that all set up. With that, I will close the mayor's comments, and I will go to Old Business. Does any member of the council have any old business to bring before us this evening? Hearing none, I will close Old Business and move on to New Business. Does any member of the council have any new business to bring before the council this evening?
Yes, Madam, I had a question for Mike, the engineer, about that water repair on Tracy Drive, you know, where they redid the whole street and then they had to take it up. The resident was concerned that, when are they going to pave it? How long do you think it'll take for them to pave that?
I'll have to check with your Public Works Department. I'm not sure what the plan is to get back there and go through the restoration. It has been settled for some time. It should be ready for the public, so I'll check with Public Works.
Thanks, Mike.
Anyone else? Seeing none, I'll close New Business and move on to audience comments. The public comment portion of our meeting is to allow the public to bring to the council's attention their concerns or comments. The council will respect the public's time by refraining any comment until the speaker has finished. It should be further noted that the public comment portion of our meeting is not structured as a question-and-answer session. If a member of the public has specific questions they seek answers to, an appointment can be made with the appropriate office. Please state your name and address for the record when you come to the podium. Yes? Good evening.
Good evening. Joe Pietanza, fifteen Bruce Court. This is in response to last meeting. I was watching it at home, and we were talking about PSENG and having them repair or fill in and seed the, the patches of grass that they took out to do the gas lines. So, I just wanted to say thank you to the mayor and council. They came about a little after the meeting, and they did my whole block, and it looks, I'm getting grass ready. So, thank you very much. And the other thing I wanted to say is, I attended the South Main Street event for the planning last week, week before, and the turnout was terrific, and job well done. You know, it, it just, all I can say is keep up the good work, and thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, I will just add on that, after, I talked about it a couple weeks ago, that we had had that meeting with PSENG, and I have gotten three or four calls from people that are thrilled. There is a foreman, his name is Curtis, and I'm going to share his information with PSENG, that he has gone out and actually followed up with several houses. I got a call from one family that has been complaining about their front lawn being torn up, and they were thrilled that they put it back to the way it is. So, I'm glad that if we complain, the squeaky wheel gets the grease, that, you know, people are seeing some results from that. So, that, that's good to hear. And that, the thanks to the meeting, a lot, in large part is to our Borough Planner, Mr. John Barry, who did a really excellent presentation at that South Main Street Rehabilitation meeting. It was great to see so many people there giving their feedback, so thank you. Anyone else? Yes? Good evening.
Hello. Debbie Miller, ninety-two Ford Avenue. On the public service project, I guess there's certain roads or parts of roads that won't be done, and is it because that they don't need to be done, or is there going to be a phase two, or?
From my knowledge, and I'm not a PSENG rep, they indicated when we met with them that they are going to be finishing up. So, if it hasn't been done, there is, I don't think there is a phase two. You haven't heard anything, Dave?
I haven't heard anything about.
We can double-check, but I don't think so, so.
So, maybe some roads just didn't, didn't need to be done?
Maybe.
I don't know, I don't understand the project.
Previously, so I don't think it's every street, but how they decide where the new pipes are going, I'm not sure, but we can certainly follow up and get an answer by the time we meet next.
And I also thought the planning at the senior citizen was very informative, so thank you.
Glad to hear it.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Seeing none, I will close audience comments and move on to council comments. Does any member of the council have any final comments?
Yes, yes, Madam Mayor. Just had to say that, that public service, you know, I spoke to public service, I'll take gas, when they did the gas mains, and my one neighbor grabbed me, and the next day they came out and fixed it, so she thinks I'm great. I had nothing to do with it, you guys.
They don't need to know that.
Take the credit down, take the credit.
It's like the Wizard of Oz, they don't need to know what goes on behind the curtain.
That's right.
Anyone else have any final comments?
No, Madam Mayor, I was going to say the exact same thing that you said, we had a very successful Little League Opening Day. Thank you for Little League and having us there, and then also to thank you to the Lions Club for a very nice and fun-filled Easter egg hunt.
Yes.
I think it was interesting, I think it took us about two hours to set up, and within five minutes, the whole field was cleared. It was great, it was great. Much cleaner than it was.
A minute fifteen, Dave.
A minute fifteen, that's true.
They had a really good Easter bunny, too.
And I understand Council, Councilman Revolinsky and Council President Zembrana almost got trampled. There's a picture of that, so.
Never seen kids move that quick before.
Dangerous business.
But thank you to the Lions Club and Little League.
Anyone else? All right, final mayor comments. Just quickly, I, I was listening as you all were giving your reports, and I was thinking that last month, it was three years since we all were locked down from COVID. It's also three years since I was elected mayor. And, you know, to hear all of the changes and different things that have gone on, even in the last year or two since we've come out of the lockdown, you know, some of the things that people have been commenting on, that wish that they would happen, and, you know, all of your reports included things that people have been asking for, and for one reason or the next, it didn't happen, like the senior bus, now they can go on trips. I hear Council President Zembrana talk about that all the time. Rec trips, we were asking, you know, there were a lot of people asking, you know, when are you going to start up and do Broadway shows again? I saw on the sign that they're doing, running a trip to see Funny Girl. The fact that they have camps and, and a lot of other things that people have been asking for a longer Albert Ave camp, they're doing the pool badges earlier, the park improvements, as well as the water system improvements. So, you know, it just runs through my mind of what I hear in my day job, which is continuous improvement. So, I'm, I'm really thrilled that we've seen a lot of continuous improvement here in the borough, and a lot of it relies on hearing from you folks on what, what you're looking for. That's really why we're here, to get that feedback, and then to rely on the people that work here to put that into place, and I think they've all done a fabulous job doing that, and so I really, really appreciate it. So, thanks to all of you, and to all of you for your, your great ideas, and we look forward to, to more and continuing to improve, so thank you. And with that, that concludes the mayor comments, and what do I have left? Oh, we have to go into executive session. So, the Borough Council will be entering an executive session. The public will be excluded from this portion of the meeting to permit the Borough Council to consider matters appropriate for discussion in such a session. The Borough Council will briefly convene in the municipal conference room, and thereafter will return to the meeting room to open session. At this time, I'd like to defer to our attorney, Mr. Vignolo, for an explanation of the subject matter to be discussed.
The subject matter is potential litigation, I believe, and the council may be taking action when it comes out of an executive session. So, it is not just information, there may be action taken following the executive session.
Okay.
Okay.
And the executive session is Resolution one-twenty-six, twenty-twenty-three. So, may I have a motion and a second to approve Resolution one-twenty-six, twenty-twenty-three?
So moved.
Second?
I have a motion by Councilman Potter, second by Councilwoman Collins. Will the clerk please call the rule?
Council President Zembrana?
Aye.
Councilman Collins?
Aye.
Councilwoman O'Donnell?
Aye.
Councilman Peretti?
Aye.
Councilman Potter?
Aye.
Motion carries to go into executive session?
Okay, thank you. So, we're going to go to the conference room, and then we will return.
How do we bring James with us?
James, thank you, take care. Hang up, ma'am.